Well, it's pretty quiet in here, so it must be time to start. We'll go ahead and call the Johnson City Council Meeting, number 25-13 to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Evans?
I want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be an opportunity to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Who have I not picked on? Christine, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do, and I'm not going to correct, so...
She's got it correct already.
Okay, so it's some meeting numbers that need to be corrected.
Which I've already announced, so...
Okay.
Any other changes, council? There are no other changes. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Public Communications, we have three listed public communications this evening. The first is a recognition of Parks employee for quick reactions.
We would like to recognize Clayton Borman. He was out mowing on one of our parks when there was an accident, and he responded to it and helped out the victim and called 911. And the victim was actually Matty Schwers from our office, so we helped out a fellow employee. So it was just a good person helping another good person at a time of need. So we're very excited that our employees respond and notice things like that. He could have just kept on driving and pretended it wasn't his problem, but wanted to reach out and help somebody, so...
Before I present him with a certificate and take pictures, I have been provided with something that Matty Schwers has written about the situation, and she asked that I read it tonight. So I'll read it from here, because the print is a little bit little, and I have to wear my glasses and look real close here. But this is for Matty about the situation that we're recognizing Clayton for this evening. "I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight to help honor Clayton for this quick thinking, for his quick thinking and support the day of my accident. That morning Clayton went above and beyond. While out on his usual mowing route, he heard the crash and immediately ran toward my vehicle. He didn't know who was involved, he just ran to help. That says so much about his character. His dedication to this community and his instinct to jump into action without hesitation is truly remarkable. I was shaken up. I'd been hit hard, and I didn't see it coming. On top of that, I was early in my pregnancy, which brought a wave of added fears. Had the seatbelt hurt my baby? Had I hit my head? What had just happened? Clayton was by my side within seconds, calmly reassuring me and calling 911. Just minutes later, our incredible first responders arrived. I felt incredibly lucky that I was close to work and surrounded by such capable, caring team. I'm so grateful to work alongside people like Clayton and our public safety crews, who responded that morning. Seeing familiar faces and hearing 'we've got you' made all the difference. What started as a traumatic morning was eased by their presence and professionalism. It meant the world to me, and I know for many of them, it was just another day on the job. That perspective alone opened my eyes to just how much they see and how far they're willing to go to help others." And again, this was a personal email from Matty about the situation, and I think that probably says it all. You know, we've got incredible staff in this city. And Clayton, you went above and beyond that day in helping Matty out, and obviously it meant a lot to her. And the reassurances that she had people like you and our first responders there to help her out in her particular situation just, you know, meant the world to her. So I just want to thank you, I want to thank all of our staff for everything that they do, because you're the best example this evening of how, you know, what a great job our staff does. But every day, I know across the entire community, you know, we have others like you who are doing more than their job for the residents of this community. So thank you, and thanks to everyone else. So with that, I want to present you with a certificate. And we'll invite the council now to take a picture. You want to sign this one or the separate one? Oh, okay. Thank you. I have a well-trained... Do you want to say anything, Clayton?
I don't really have much to add, I think. We're all about the same situation. Really just glad that everybody was able to walk away without serious injuries.
Well, Duncan and I would be, you're a hero that day.
Please, I really appreciate it. Very close, yeah.
Thank you for making sure.
Thanks so much.
Okay, the next item under Public Communications is a proclamation for National Park and Recreation Month. And Jeff has provided me with a copy of a proclamation here that I have already signed. Jeff, did you want to say anything about the proclamation?
This just happens every year. We kind of recognize park and rec employees, July is Park and Rec Month, and it's just a good way to bring recognition when we're kind of at our busiest time of year, trying to take care of some things. And, you know, we're all waking up every day trying to do the best we can to make our communities better for our citizens, and so we're excited to be recognized with this proclamation.
And thank you, Jeff, for providing this to me. Jeff has done a very fine job of summarizing what the proclamation says, so I won't read all of this very fine print for everyone here. But again, you know, we have incredible Parks and Rec staff. We celebrated the ribbon cutting of Crown Point today, and again, that's the latest example of how well our staff does and, you know, a great representation of the kind of amenities that we provide to this community. And I know that, you know, every day our park staff goes out there and they work hard in their jobs, and they want to make sure that they're doing their jobs in a way that the entire community can be proud of. And, you know, many of us are out on the trails, we're at our park facilities a lot, and, you know, I'm always so proud that, you know, that these are the facilities and the amenities that we provide to our community. And I hear from our residents all the time about how much they're appreciated. So thanks to all of you, thanks to you, Jeff, and...
They did a great job this weekend, too. Carrie and Elvire and Matt came in over the fourth to kind of make sure parks were not the place where people were blowing things up, and we kind of did a little damage control, and I think, for the most part, everything went well. They did a great job, and we didn't have a whole lot to clean up in our parks over the weekend, so...
Well, I walked through Tara Park on Sunday morning. Was it Sunday morning? Yeah, Sunday morning. Everything looked great. It was absolutely beautiful. Nothing that was a concern. The women's bathroom door still sticks. But they're on it, I know they're on it.
I told Matt about it again this morning.
Not a problem. So did we want to take a picture?
Yeah.
Anything you do? Thank you. Anything you can add?
I thought it was National Park. I thought it was American National Park. It's a national park. Yeah, it's national. Yeah, it's national. Pardon me.
Wow, that needs to be... I know. I think they must have been a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Okay, we have one other scheduled public communication this evening, and that is some comments from Andy Lyons.
I am Andy Lyons. We live in North Glen. We've lived here for 30 years, and we've grown old here. But young at heart and what also has helped me be young is the bike trails here. I'm an avid biker and have been even before we moved to Johnson. The trails here are great. And while Johnson is known as the city of trees, I'd like to suggest that maybe it should be changed to the city of trees and trails. I know how well-maintained the city keeps them, and I really appreciate that the crews go above and beyond to be respectful and courteous when encountering bicyclists. They stop what they're doing and pull over if necessary until bikers go by. Hell, they're working, we're playing. It's quite impressive and greatly appreciated. I like how that's part of my tax dollars being spent. While the trails are great, and this is, I'm sorry, after all this great stuff, while the trails are great, there are a few problems and dangerous ones that seem to me like an accident waiting to happen, and I think the city really needs to address them. Sorry, I hate to be a bitch, but I have some photos that I'd like to share.
We love handouts.
So the trail along the south side of 70th Street, west of Merle Hay, and east of Northland Drive, it's the long, steep hill that is every kid's dream and grownups, too. And as you can see, the trail just goes on and on and on. Looks like it could go all the way to California, and it just begs to go fast. But there is danger down at the bottom of the hill that one of those accidents, that is one of those accidents, is waiting to happen. And maybe there have been accidents there. If not, it's only by the grace of God. So the driveway to Casey's is lurking in those hidden spots and can't be seen due to a fence along the north boundary of Johnson Commons, and then there's a big Mid-American Energy or someone's power box that further obscures the driveway. Bikers can't see traffic coming out of Casey's until the last minute, nor can drivers see bicyclists until the last minute. And more often than not, if by chance a car slows down or stops, it's usually in the middle of the trail as they're waiting for oncoming traffic, no doubt eating a piece of pizza, so bicyclists have to either swerve or stop or scream. I don't know how years ago, I brought this up to the Parks Department and was told, "It's not our fence, it's not our power box, there's really nothing we can do." Well, I really hope there is something you can do. The situation's been a concern of mine for years, but lately I've seen too many near misses. Bikers going way too fast and can't see the cars, and cars are going too fast and can't see the bikers. If the instructions can't be modified to make the area safer, can signs at least be posted to make everyone aware of the danger zone, like "Slow down, biker trail"? "Driveway here, watch for cars"? Something. It's really a scary situation, almost a family getting wiped out the other day. It just needs to be made safer if possible. And then, of course, then the trail passes in front of Casey's to cross North Glen Drive, and that can be dangerous, too. Too many cars don't stop at the stop sign line that's well behind the crossing area. They roll up to 70th Street right in the middle of the bike trail, and that's pretty dangerous, too. Maybe there needs to be a sign for bikers there, too. And one more area, I'm sorry, I hate to bitch, but there's one more area that needs your attention. The trail leading south from Ray Schlies? Schlies?
Schlies?
Park? That park down there. Beautiful part of the trail, long, sweeping hill and curves and big vistas, it's just absolutely gorgeous. But at the bottom, there's a tree and brush overgrowth on the east side that really, really obscures westbound traffic. I've included two photos on the last two pages. The first has a car in it, but you have to look close, and the second one has a dump truck, so you don't have to look that much closer. But please notice that while there's a signpost, "Stop ahead" with a small "slow down" sign beneath it, please look close at the photo. There's no stop sign. Moreover, the traffic flow on Johnson Drive is wild, lots of it, on a straightaway that, like hills on bike trails, begs to be driven fast, and lots of the traffic does. So I think replacing the stop sign for bikers is a must, but how about slow-down bicyclists' head signs on Johnson Drive for traffic? I talked about my tax dollars work earlier. How about the possibility of building like a bridge over Johnson Drive or a tunnel underneath it, just for safety's sake? Same goes for a couple of spots on Merle Hay. I can dream, can't I? I'm hoping you can address these problems, and thank you for your attention today. Oh, and one more thing, and you probably don't want to hear about this one, but the trail on the other side of what's supposed to be bombers, is there a new completion date? I've been here in months and years, and damn, that's my trail. Anyway, from what I've seen, it's going to be a great trail. I love what's been done to the west side, on the west side of Merle Hay, but from what I've seen, the east side is going to be absolutely beautiful. I had to snoop a little bit. The signs say "trail closed," but it doesn't say "keep out." I think about, and think about, Johnson City of Trees and Trails, it has a nice ring to it, you can have banners hanging from those bridges, never mind. But how about it? No charge for me to you, and thank you again. Please think about making Johnson bike trails safer. And they're really fabulous, and I really, I hate to complain, but those are some danger areas that have just seen too many nasty things, and, you know, if I was younger, I'd just speed right through that stuff, but I'm not. But it keeps me...
Well, Andy, thank you so much for...
You're welcome. Thank you.
...coming here this evening and sharing these concerns with us. I know it's something that we'll take a very close look at. I also had someone ask me today about completion of that trail. Do we have an answer to that?
We don't have a specific date or an answer to that. As the Des Moines Water Works project, they continue to find leaks in their pipe, so they are addressing those. The worst thing that we could do would be to put in a bike trail and tear it back up. So once they've passed a pressure test and they have that segment, they're ready to get in there and pour. They actually had it ready to go last year, and then they found leaks. And the latest update prior to last week was they had, I think they had found one more leak, and it actually held pressure longer than it had prior to that test, and then they found another leak. So they're still addressing those leaks. We continue to pressure them to get that done, but when they find those leaks, they actually have to dig up that entire joint, and then they bring in a specialist to weld that joint, and it's concrete pipe. So I'm not sure how that works, but they continue to make efforts to try and get that constructed.
Well, we're going to stay on top of it. We'll get that trail in as soon as we can. No, I understand.
Do you think, Matt, the Johnston Drive, are we looking at the potential for where the pedestrian or the biker can activate by a button?
Yeah, we've actually programmed in this year's budget, putting in some pedestrian-activated crossing lights for the trail at that location, much like what you see on 62nd at Corteva, that will have the rapid flashing beacons, so that you can pull up there, stop, and push your buttons, because you still, even though those lights are activated, you want to make sure the traffic sees you and stops. But we are looking at, ended budget, for a set to go into Johnston this year, probably at that location.
We had heard, and I, so a cross-country coach for the high school, that's a popular spot for the, on the run course, and so that they, that was requested. I had a cross-country coach, I think it was, I taught one of my kids or something, so that ended up being one of the conversations in the parent-teacher conference, so...
Yep.
Anyway, so I think that will be, that will help at least for that one location, so...
Is there, we're still under Public Communications. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Anybody online? Seeing none, we will move on. Public hearings, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, second consideration of ordinance number 1140, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Johnson, Iowa, for the purpose of adopting regulations for the operation of golf carts on city streets.
Good evening. I've received no comments of any kind. I don't believe any other city staff member has as well. So from the police department's perspective, if you want to move on, third reading to adopt and publish, there's no objection from that either.
Council, have any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1140?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7...
Before we move on, given that the chief raised the idea of waiving the third reading, if there's no objection from the council members, I'd like to make a motion to waive third reading of ordinance number 1140 and to adopt and publish.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, third consideration and final adoption of ordinance number 1139, amending Section 1504 and Section 1706 for the purpose of amending mayor and council compensation as of January 1st, 2026.
Thank you, mayor and council. Staff has not received any public comments to this issue since our last meeting, and we're recommending your consideration of the third reading.
Does the council have any comments?
I do.
Go ahead, councilman.
All right.
All ready.
Okay, I think I made this clear last time as well, several times now, so I'm still strongly opposed to raising the salary of us. It's nothing that you're going to achieve doing it. And as I stated, mayor, and Mike, you were not here in the last meeting, but I'm going to state this again for your benefit. As I said, I'm not really interested in salary, I just came to serve the city, and I'm going to do, continue to do so. And as I said in my last meeting, I will give away the salary that I'm going to receive to the foot bank starting next month, well, this month. Everything that comes since now, all my salary will go to the foot bank. So as I was saying, actions speak louder than words, and walk the talk, and I'm still opposed to this salary raise. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman Ready. Well, I've got just a couple of comments, too, and I don't think it'll come as any surprise to the council that I'm opposed to this ordinance, too, as well as the increase in compensation that the ordinance would provide. It's a position that I feel strongly about, and I understand and accept that others have a different position on it. I consider it a privilege to serve the residents of Johnston. I'm honored that they have put their trust in me and have elected me and re-elected me 11 times. I did not expect compensation when I first ran for city council, even as mayor. I thought these positions were like school board positions, that they were unpaid. Our board and commission members also serve the community, and they are not paid in those positions either. It's been argued that if the compensation was higher, it might encourage others to run for council or mayor, and I just don't find that argument compelling. We've always been successful in attracting good candidates to serve in these positions, and even with the increase, the pay will still not be high enough to really compensate anyone for the time it takes to do these jobs. I believe people run and serve in these positions because they love our community and they want to make it the best it possibly can be. As I've thought about this, I have, you know, three options. I could veto it, I could sign it, or I could not sign it. I don't believe that this is a policy or a budget decision that rises to the level of a veto, and even though I oppose it, if I could vote against it, some mayors have the power to vote, I don't have that power. If I could just, if I could simply vote against it, I would do that. So if it passes, and I expect it will, I will not be signing it, which means per Iowa law, it will go into effect 14 days later. I believe that by not signing the ordinance, it's the best way for me to go on record opposing it, which I oppose, and it's also consistent with my prior record on proposed increases for compensation for Johnson elected officials. So that will be, that will be my intentions this evening. Is there any other comments?
I would just make a brief comment as well, and I appreciate the comments from both councilmember Ready and your comments, mayor, and, you know, we have, this, tonight will be the fifth opportunity we've had to discuss this issue. We discussed it at a work session either in late, I think it was in late 2024. I thought it had a really good discussion, and we, at that point, looked at not only an increase in compensation, but also the possibility, as many other cities have done, doing a automatic escalator. And at that point, significant opposition, serious, significant, really, opposition was raised, especially to that element, and I think the folks who are advocating for this increase took that to heart and were willing to support an ordinance in front of the council that did not include that element. So I think that was a good example of trying to find some middle ground on this issue. Obviously, then, when we went through the budgets process, we also talked about it as part of the budget process, and now we've talked about it as part of three readings and had a public hearing on it. There's been some news coverage out there about it, and throughout this whole process, I know I've not had a single citizen stop me and ask me about it. And when I've talked to them about it and why I think this is a good thing to do, people have been very understanding of it. And I, I think we, this is a hard issue, right? This is an issue that has bedeviled other communities, it bedevils the legislature. The legislature has gone years without dealing with their pay because of the political element of it. So I'm really glad that we're willing to take it on and address it, and address it in a way that even though it's a contentious issue, I think we're handling it in a way that's open and in a positive dialogue, and I appreciate that very much. I will be supporting it tonight, as I've supported it in the previous, and I do believe it is the right thing to do.
Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve third consideration and final adoption of ordinance number 1139?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
No.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,582,948.22.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments.
I just have one quick announcement this evening. Really just wanted to congratulate and thank the hard work that day...
Really just wanted to congratulate and thank the hard work that Dave Wilwarding did with the Crown Point. We had the ribbon cutting this evening. You know, I think it was well-received by the community up to this point, and certainly it's a team effort. You know, we had Jeff that came along and kind of shepherded kind of the ending of the project. We had Parks and Rec staff that helped go through and do different selections and really provide input on different elements of the project to make it an even better project. So real team effort, really appreciate everything, but really hats off for Dave for picking that project up and shepherding it across the finish line. So thank you.
City councilmen, councilmen ready, please.
I think Matt has a comment.
Sorry, I've got a couple of comments, just to give a quick CIWW update. Our stage three lawn watering ban continues to be in effect by large. Most of our community members have adhered to that lawn watering ban. Staff has reached out to approximately 97 residents to talk with them about the irrigation ban and what that means, and for us to be able to continue to meet our drinking water standards by not lawn watering. Due to the persistent rain, our nitrate concentrations continue to be up in the Des Moines and the Raccoon. However, they are starting to come down. Just a little bit of comparison, on July 4th, so last Friday, in the Raccoon River, they were 15.46 milligrams per liter. Today, they're at 12.27, so we're gradually seeing those come down. One of the many factors to fully lift that ban requires at least one of those water sources to be, the concentration to be at 10 milligrams per liter or less. You know, we'll see, need to see sustained, consistent trend, downward trend in that source water before they can fully lift stage three of the lawn watering ban. So any questions? I mean, we've done a great job, our residents have complied greatly, and we appreciate them doing so. Couple of project updates, 100th Street and 78th Avenue, our street and trail project. Yes.
Sorry, before you go into the next topic, the CSWW topic, can we talk a little bit on that?
Yes.
Yes, the question I have is, this ordinance has, this is probably the first time we had it since 20 years now, and this probably once in a lifetime, but I presume that it will happen quite often going forward. So what are the plans for CIWW to expand the nitrate cleaning thing, the facilities that they have currently, I believe they are two or three. Are they planning for more of those facilities come up soon?
Those discussions, I would assume that it will take place after, after the event. They have not come up during the event. The CIWW has been focused on production and capacity to make sure that they meet the safe drinking water standard. So I will have an after-action on those discussions, they just haven't happened yet.
Okay, that's something that we need to keep in mind. So if that comes by, let us, keep us informed on that, right?
Yeah, we'll, I'll provide updates as they come through.
All right, thank you.
On the 100th Street and 78th project, it continues to make progress between these rain events. Last week, the contractor poured the first section of trail near the intersection of 100th and 78th, so it was good to come back from vacation and see progress being made. They've completed one of the three retaining walls, and they formed another section of the trail towards the south end of the project. So if you drive through the 100th Street corridor, you'll see some trail that's formed that'll be poured later this week, and then there is a section that's poured up towards the north end of that project. Once we get that trail completed or near completion, the roadwork will be able to begin at that point in time. We just didn't want to get the new road in and then tear that up with construction of the trail, so we're kind of building it backwards, trail first, and then the roadwork will take place. Any questions on that project? Lastly, Merle Hay in Johnston Drive. We've had that project completed for quite some time, but if you've noticed, Mid-American is making progress. They now have all the streetlights in place, and they have all of the old lines and power poles removed from essentially the Beaver Drive Bridge up to Northwest 55th. So they're making progress with that. I think one of the last things they have to do is replace some trail. That should happen either later this week or early next. So just wanted to provide a quick update on that as well. Thank you.
Any other staff? Chief, did you want to report on your, your interactions with the Kosovo Police last week?
Seems like a lifetime ago already. Yes, we were fortunate enough to host the general director of the Kosovo Police Service last week for a visit to Iowa. He and a couple of his top officials within the organization came to do a specific assessment on Iowa law enforcement. I think most of you are aware, I've been engaged in discussions for more than eight years now on trying to create a law enforcement exchange between the law enforcement community in Iowa and Kosovo. So they came on site, had a lot of great meetings over about two and a half days to introduce them to the capabilities of Iowa law enforcement. Obviously, very different policing models when you consider a national policing model versus what we have in Iowa and across the country. Very, very interesting conversations, took a lot away from it. They're very excited to try to move this project forward. I think it will truly be a mutually beneficial agreement if we can get it done. The next step in the process would be to take some law enforcement leaders from Iowa over to Kosovo and do the same kind of assessment as what was done here, to see where we can bridge the gap in training capabilities and response capabilities. I honestly believe that Iowa law enforcement has a lot to learn from the Kosovo Police Service and their culture too, quite honestly. But I do believe that we can, we can have a win-win relationship where we can share some of the bedrock of what we do in law enforcement in Iowa that they're constantly trying to find time for in and amongst their security mission as a country. So lots more to come, I hope. General Oars has been a big player in this too, mayor, you have as well. And we're making good, strong headway, and I hope that I'll have something in the form of a memorandum of understanding to try to create the relationship. Ideally, within the next year, if we're ambitious, within the next six months, we'll see how all that stuff goes, but there'll be, there'll be more to come on it, but just a really enriching experience, I think, for everybody who participated. And I truly believe that it's not just the sister city communities, the whole state of Iowa can benefit from the Kosovo Police model that they've developed. So it's pretty exciting.
So just, just to put this in context, when, when the chief says that the general director and some of his top officials came over, they have a national police force in Kosovo as opposed to local police forces like we have, and this was the top dog. This was their chief and some of his lieutenants, or whatever their, their titles are. The, our chief, I think he had about three days' notice that they were coming, or less.
Less than a week of, of time I got the notice to when they were going to be at our doorstep.
And he put together a heck of a program for them. So thank, thanks, thank you, chief, for, for all of your effort in pulling that together. That was, that was just absolutely incredible.
Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Welcome, Chief Coleman, your first city council meeting. Of course, you were here, you visited, you visited last time, but you're here as, as as our chief tonight, so glad to have you here. In fact, I should have had you lead us in the pledge next time. The first week is going well?
It's going well.
Good, good. Well, I heard some more good comments about you this morning. Who'd I hear that from? I don't remember. Anyway, I, you know, I, I hear, I hear good feedback on you, about you all the time, so anyway. Going to the city council, councilman ready?
At last, thank you.
Councilman Martin?
You know, my only comment is, you guys all know that I'm a big gardener, and with the, the heat and the rain, everything is growing great in my yard. And it seems odd that we're having the worst nitrate difficulty with our drinking water in 20 years. And really, this is the weather, I mean, yeah, it's been a little hot and humid, but when is Iowa not? So we're really having a really good summer, except that we are now in the stage of having to worry about our drinking water. And that, I'm not offering anything besides an insight that, I certainly don't want to wish a drought on us, but we've gone 20 years, and here is the first year that I can think of where it's, like, last year, we had a lot of rain in the spring, and then the spigots turned off as soon as July came around, and we didn't have any rain until, I don't know, October, we might have got a sprinkle or two. I mean, it was a terrible fall. It's, you know, councilman Ready talked about what are the future plans, and we need to start addressing it at every level. And the reason that we are, you know, we charge extra money for irrigation metering is, it's important because until people have to pay for it, I don't think change happens. And so we're all going to have to do some changes. And it's kind of sad when you think about how much rain we're getting right now. Anyway, it's just a comment, that's all I had. Thanks.
Councilman Burkhardt?
I had the wonderful opportunity to travel with my family, and so I went away for a couple of weeks, and you guys threw a party with a parade and everything while I was gone. We got a new fire chief while I was gone. I mean, it, like, it's like the city didn't even know I was missing. And, and quite frankly, I was prepared to come back and make a pitch tonight. One of the places we traveled had, maybe you're aware of these awesome kind of canals with singing gondoliers, and I was really thinking that maybe we should just do that in Johnston, but I'd settle for a pool. And quite frankly, you are going to hear more and more of that because it is an unaddressed issue. We heard it from an art consultant today that that is a major wish upon our residents. It is something that is in our strategic plan to address, and it's been rather stagnant. So you're going to continue to hear me talk about it. We even had an unsolicited comment as we cut the ribbon, or shortly after we cut the ribbon, that a senior citizen in Johnston said, "Now it's time to address aquatics." And so you're going to hear it from me, and you're going to hear it from a lot more folks in the coming months and years as we have to continue to make those tough decisions about our economic situation. But hopefully, it'll include some sort of aquatics.
Some things take a long time.
That's right. And I'm young.
First of all, it's good to hear that, I presume that councilman Burkhardt's vacation was to Vegas. Said gondolas, and, okay, maybe not. Three things real quick. First of all, so CIWW, sort of structurally, and I want, first of all, I want to appreciate the leadership that Matt is providing as part of the technical committee at CIWW. The technical committee plays a really important role at CIWW. It's made up of kind of the staff, primarily staff experts from all the different 10, 12 member communities that participate in CIWW. So first of all, I want to thank Matt for his leadership on the technical committee. And both myself as the primary board member, and then councilmember Burkhardt as the alternate, we serve on the, on the board for CIWW. And so CIWW is kind of a new organization, right? We were kind of going through, we've been around for now maybe a little over a year, and especially for Johnston, you know, we went previously the way water was handled. We were a customer of Des Moines Water Works. And so when it came to the time to decide how to manage nitrates, or how to manage some of these issues, we were a customer, and we kind of had, whatever decision they made, whether we agreed with it or not, we didn't really get to play much of a role in that decision-making. So, and so now we've transitioned into a new CIWW process. Now, CIWW, in a lot of ways, has adopted many of the same processes that Des Moines Water Works had previously. This water shortage plan that CIWW uses is something that they adopted from Des Moines Water Works because that was something that they had developed over time and worked, and so, and, and for the most part perfected. And so that's sort of part of that process, but obviously, now that we're board members, we have a role in kind of some of that decision-making. And I, and I want to thank the mayor, who I think has done a really good job of helping identify CIWW's policies, its, its, its rules and regulations, and maybe there's some shortcomings that need to be looked into and further researched. So I really appreciate that, your work on that, mayor, and we're, we are, we've asked those questions, and you've seen those questions being asked, because I think there's some, I think those are really good questions. We need to really understand what decisions are really to be made by the board, what decisions are to be made by the technical committee, what decisions are made by staff, and how does that, does that get rolled out? I think that CIWW is, is, I think, providing a really important service to the Des Moines metro area and those member communities. And it's, and now, I think, by allowing us to be involved in that decision-making process, I think that'll allow us to help make, help contribute to some good decisions that are going to have to be made over not just the next six months or six years, but, but 60 years into the future. One of the, two, two of the things that we're doing right now is expanding, we're making a small expansion at Sailerville, the water treatment facility that's right across the river. We're also doing an expand, building a new treatment, water treatment plant in the, on the west side, and also doing an expansion at Grimes as well. And those are all require ratepayer money and figuring that all out, and that, so those will be all sort of the decisions. So just, Teresh, just kind of wanted to share that with you and for others as well, you know, that, that obviously, Matt, both between Matt and Brian and myself and Mike also pays very close attention to those issues too. We're working very closely to try to track these issues, and also wanted to note the mayor's contributions as well. So that's the first issue. Second issue, Matt really wanted, you know, this trail that we're doing along 100th Street is really, I've had so many people stop me and thank me for that, because it, you know, cross, it helps connect a neighborhood cross even, which is a large neighborhood, which, which really was not connected to our community. So, and, and I've heard also from folks who live in the neighborhoods along 78, who are, who are now also have access to our trails. So that trail project's great and really excited about it. People ask me, "When is it going to happen?", and I'm really excited that it's sooner rather than later. So thank you for your good work on that. And then the third, third issue, I just wanted to say, I did some walking this weekend through, on our trails, and also over to Lou Clarkson Park, and then also the Timber Ridge, not Timber Ridge, over to Terra Park, with a lot of anxiety about what I might find as far as fireworks residue. And I was pleasantly surprised, and I want to thank Jeff and his team, because I think, I think obviously our residents, and, you know, it may be now that people are allowed to, you know, we don't know. This is one year, and maybe this is an aberration, but now that people can fire them off at their own home on July 3rd and July 4th, maybe more people are doing it. I certainly heard and saw examples of that in my own neighborhood, and so that might be one side benefit of that. But I was so pleased, because we have invested so heavily in places like Lou Clarkson and in Terra Park, and it's shown tonight with, with what we're doing at, at Crown Point. These are, and Dewey Park, and those parks and trail system is something that's so important to us and our residents. They're important assets for the community. So I was so pleased that we survived what could be at times, something that could create some real destruction, unneeded and probably, probably unintended destruction. I think sometimes folks don't really know what the heck they're doing with those explosives. But just so proud of the work that our staff did, the bit that they contributed to help make sure that today, all of those facilities look as in great shape as they did before. And I got to, I, I, we have some of the finest park restroom facilities, whether it's, they all have soap in them, they're, they're really well-maintained. So, you know, that's not always the best, easiest place to find hand soap, right, is a, is a restroom at a park, but good work by the folks who are making sure that those are all, are properly maintained. So just wanted to share with that, and I had a chance to share that with Carrie earlier tonight as well. And so thank you very much, Jeff, for your leadership and your work there. So that was my, that's, sorry for going on for a little too long, but had to add to some stuff. Thank you.
The only thing that I'll, I'll share this evening is just a brief, very brief summary of our trip to PEA, or to Kosovo. As you all know, Mike- As you all know, Mike and I traveled over to Kosovo a couple of weeks ago, and we went over there with 31 other Iowans. Most of the cities that have sister city relationships in Kosovo did have representatives on the trip, but not all of them. But we had an opportunity to not only visit our sister city, but also travel to some of the other sister cities and actually witness the signing of the sister city relationship between, or agreement between Ames, Iowa and Podievo. So they are now our ninth city in Iowa that has a sister city relationship in Kosovo. Just real briefly, Mike and I spent a great day in Pea, meeting with the mayor in Pea as well as some of the city staff there. They took us around, and we did a little sightseeing, but mostly it was just kind of a, you know, an introduction to the community, some, what was the educational...
It's kind of Makerspace?
Yeah, Makerspace type of, which was really, really fun to see. But I think some of the productive things that we brought back, one, we, I've had conversation with the mayor of Pea, or, yeah, the mayor of Pea in the past about bringing Pea beer to Iowa and to Johnston in particular. We did make some connections there. Pea Brewery has been around for decades, and it's a very popular beer in all of Kosovo. And, you know, we have lots of military members in Iowa who have spent time in Kosovo. So I think we have a good market for them already here in the States. So Mike and I met with the chief finance officer for Pea Brewery, Pea Beer, and talked to him about our interest in bringing Pea beer to Iowa. They do have some presence on the East Coast, but they are looking to expand and maybe even build a brewery someplace, and so this would be the perfect place. I mean, if there's a beer capital of America, it's probably here in Iowa with all of our craft breweries. So we're making some progress on bringing Pea beer to Iowa. They've also, over the time that I've had interactions with the Pea officials, they have really developed their tourism office. They have, you know, a lot of tourism type of opportunities in their, in their community and within the country. They're a spot where other Kosovars will go and visit. So we're going to work with them on how we can help promote them as a tourism destination. They also have an incredible judo academy in Pea. And you may know that two or three of the most recent Olympic gold medalists come from Kosovo, and they actually were trained in that judo academy. And they all live like within three blocks of each other. So it's, you know, it's an incredible training facility, and we've talked about maybe how we can do some exchanges, having their trainers come over, having their, some of their athletes come over, and maybe sending some of our kids over there to spend some time. So anyway, those are just some of the, some of the ideas that we shared with each other while we were there. So we could, Mike and I could probably put together a whole PowerPoint presentation.
We should.
We probably should, of, you know, all the interactions that we had there, because I think that it was, it was time well spent. And what Mike found out, I've been there six times now, but what Mike found out is that there is never any downtime. You're up at 8:00 in the morning, you're on the vans headed someplace, and you usually don't return back to your room until about 10:00 at night. So, so they, General Ohr and Kim Heidemann, who works for the council's office, they put together a very, very aggressive agenda, and we do what they say, and it's always worthwhile. So, anyway, we'll...
If I can take a few comments, because I think, thank you for the reminder on this, because I kind of forget who I've chatted about Kosovo. You know, a lot of interesting takeaways. First time to Kosovo and Perstina for myself, and the probably number one takeaway is, for me, is to look at a community that's been through so many adversities, and I heard from a number of people when we were in Pea that 95% of the community was destroyed from the war. And you look around, and I'm like, where? Because you don't see that scar, the resilience...
My first trip over there, you could see it, yeah. I mean, there were still bombed out, you know, storefronts along the streets.
But the resiliency of this community to rebuild and look for ways to rebuild, and to try to address some of the root causes. One of the meetings we had in Pea was with the Pea Rotary Club, and they've been partnering with a Rotary Club in Virginia to do a training, kind of a train-the-trainer for teachers in Pea and that region on human rights and peacemaking. And so they're actually moving that along. Johnston Rotary is now actually reaching out to some other Rotary Clubs in Iowa to see if we can get them over the, kind of bridge the gap to fill that funding need. So I think, you know, their resilience, people that really are looking for ways to further their democracy, it was super interesting, you know, had the opportunity to meet with the first president of Kosovo, met a signer of the Declaration of Independence of Kosovo, was in, along with the commander of the Kosovo Liberation Army, you know, and that's like the George Washington of America. And, you know, these are people that are live, that are talking about their history. One of the individuals that was with us was a college professor from Co College, who actually wrote a book about the independence movement of Kosovo. And I remember overhearing a conversation, like, "Hey, we need to talk about the flag because you got that wrong in your book." And, you know, those individuals in our country, you have to go visit a cemetery, and they're not talking back to you. And so just to see them create their history. And then my final comment on it is, they love America. And how much they love America, like, there are more American flags in Perstina, Kosovo, than Johnston, Iowa. And it's not like, let's go put up 10 flags and we'll catch up. I don't know if we could catch up. And, you know, so they are very appreciative of where they're at as a country. And so I think there's just, like, Chief McDaniel made the question, the comment about, you know, Johnston Police, Iowa Police could learn a lot from Kosovo. The experiences that, you know, we can gain from that is maybe different from what Kosovo can gain from us, but certainly it's not any less meaningful. So those are my quick takeaways.
So, anything else for the go-to-the-order? We did take some toys, some toys over to the K-9 unit of the Kosovo Police, so they were excited to get some, some training tools. They look like toys to me, but they were excited to receive them, so, anyway. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thanks, Surest.
Bye, guys.